I'm gonna go ahead and let Pastor Walworth, who is here as our invocation speaker, begin his invocation while you're working on your Zoom. So it's my pleasure to introduce tonight our invocation speaker, Pastor John Walworth from the Perry Congregational Church, who is the first one who came to me many years ago and said, "Why don't we have an invocation of Perry's?" So Pastor?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Let's look to the Lord in prayer. Dear Father, we thank you, Lord, for your love for us and for the country. And in these days of uncertainty, and they're certainly uncertain, we ask for your divine intervention, not only in our lives, Lord, but in and around the community in this whole pandemic episode, Lord, around the country. I pray God blessings upon this meeting tonight, Lord, that your hand would be upon the council and all that they say and do, that it might be pleasing to you. In the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. You're welcome to stay if you wish and go at any time you wish. Have a wonderful night. Thank you. We turned up the gavel. So it is Thursday, May 21st. The time is 7:05 PM and I will call to order this regular meeting of the Perry City Council. Devin, would you please call the roll?
Genevieve Cottrell?
Here.
Craig Elliott?
Here.
Mindy Galbavy?
Here.
Adam Grass?
Here.
Christopher Powell? Terry Wood? Mayor? James Huglitt?
Here.
All of the count of four except council members Christopher Powell and Terry Wood.
Mr. Powell and Mr. Wood have both reported that they're not feeling well tonight and won't be able to join us. I find that a quorum of the city council is present and we need to proceed with business. If everyone would please join me, I have a flag here. And let me go ahead and put this up. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. That will take us to the agenda. The clerk and I have prepared the agenda and to the best of our knowledge, it has all items of business that need to come before council for your consideration tonight. I submit it to you for your amendment or approval.
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
Moved by Cottrell, seconded by Grass, that the agenda be adopted as printed. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Cottrell?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbavy?
Mindy, can you hear us because your speaker's on? She says the sound is warbling. Can't hear.
We're voting on a motion to approve the agenda as printed. It was moved by Cottrell, seconded by Grass. Cottrell has voted yes. Elliott has voted yes. And Mindy, we're looking for your vote.
It says as she's talking.
She's telling me through text that the sound is warbling and she can't hear. There she is.
Hi, Mindy.
Hi.
There she is.
Is it better?
It is right now.
Okay, do you know what we're voting on?
No.
Okay. I submit the agenda to council. It was moved by Cottrell, seconded by Grass to approve the agenda as printed. I began the roll call. Councilwoman Cottrell has voted yes. Councilman Elliott has voted yes. And I was calling for your vote.
Yes.
Councilman Grass?
Yes.
Motion carries. That will move us to reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. I believe we have two sets of minutes from the previous meeting. Devin, would you please read the minutes of the regular May 7th meeting?
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading and approve the minutes from the May 7th, 2020, regular meeting.
Second.
Moved by Grass, seconded by Elliott to suspend the rules, waive the reading and approve the minutes for the regular May 7th meeting as presented. Is there discussion on those minutes? Hearing none. Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbavy?
Yes.
Councilman Grass?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cottrell?
Yes.
What's council's pleasure regarding the special meeting minutes?
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading and approve the minutes from the May 9th, 2020, special meeting.
Second.
Moved by Grass, seconded by Elliott to suspend the rules, waive the reading and approve the minutes of the special meeting from May 9th. Is there discussion on the special meeting minutes? Hearing none. Councilwoman Galbavy?
Yes.
Councilman Grass?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cottrell?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
That will move us to pre-approved reports and presentation. We have none of those for tonight. And so that will take us to the next section of our meeting, which is public comment. It is at this time during our meetings and also at the end under any other business may come before council, that we open the floor up for members of the public to address the city council on any matter. If anyone from the public would like to address the city council, please use your Zoom device to tap the raise hand and you will be recognized for up to three minutes of public comment. Would anyone like to address the council?
I see no hand raised at this time.
I'm gonna pause for just a minute, make sure that everybody gets a chance. Okay, no hand raised. So we will move to presentation and approval of the bills. I hope council has had the opportunity to review the bills and we seek your approval to pay them.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second.
Moved by Elliott, seconded by Grass to approve the bills as presented and authorize payment. Is there discussion on the bills? Hearing no discussion. Uh, let's see. Councilman Grass?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cottrell?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbavy?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That will take us to old business. Discussion about becoming sanctuary city. This is Councilman Wood. Yes.
We somehow missed, um, communications. I didn't hear that. Or mayor reports. Did you purposely need those later on?
I'm sorry, no. I slid on down the agenda.
Okay.
Particularly moving to, um, so communications. Devin, do you have any communications?
Unfortunately, I did have two that were dropped off today. Mayor, this is new. I think you were aware of this. "To whom it may concern, consider this notice, my resignation from the Local Officers Compensation Committee effective 4/1/2020. I have enjoyed working for the city of Perry many years and taken advantage of many opportunities it has offered. Thank you, Jean Holly." And she gives us a second letter. "To whom it may concern, consider this notice, my resignation from the Board of Review, City of Perry, effective 4/1/2020. I have moved back to my hometown to enjoy my remaining retirement years. Jean Holly."
Very good. Thank you. Not very good. I'm sorry to see her go. She's been a great servant for a long time. Those are two important posts that we'll need to fill. In particular, the Board of Review will need to fill by next February. When the Board of Review comes up again, we'll need that third member. Did you have any other communications?
No.
Okay. Um, that will take us to mayor's report. Let's see. I've got something under here regarding a water meter. John Souter, our DPW superintendent is with us. John, would you like to brief council on what's going on regarding water meters?
Yes. Um, as we went to read water meters last week, uh, on the 11th, we discovered that the modem is no longer supported by 2 or 3G. I don't know which one. Uh, in dealing with the company Ferguson, um, and it's a Neptune reader.
They didn't know.
We worked on it all last week. Uh, Monday, uh, the decision was made that Neptune was not gonna be able to fix it. So, um, I had him draw up a new quote for a new device that replaces it, uh, pretty much directly. Uh, and I believe that made it in the packets. It just didn't get put on the, uh, agenda because of the late hour that it was. So really, the only thing different is instead of having in one of the DPW vehicles, it'll still have a device, but we'll have to use a cellular device, which is gonna be upgradable and not become antiquated like the current modem that was in there, uh, in the vehicle now. So, um, it's gonna, I, they came in and read the meters from our, our supporting company, uh, on Tuesday. The reason I wanted to put this on the agenda is I feel that we need to get moving on it because I don't know if it's gonna be ready to go and in place at the city, um, by the mid-month readings in June. So I wanted to try to get a lead on it. I've looked at the budget and in water, the equipment maintenance fund and system maintenance fund combined, uh, should cover the, uh, the cost here of $10,434. Just as a note, it has went down about $4,000 from the current system, which was, uh, put in initially in 2015. And technology continues to change. So this one here, I believe, is going to be on more of a updated basis along instead of just running to its end of life. So I, I think that there's more pluses, uh, moving forward.
So the problem was a procedural one. By the time the determination was made to, uh, that the city needed to proceed with this new water meter, it was too late to add it to your agenda. The timeframe had lapsed. There are two ways to proceed in getting this approved since John is concerned waiting till our June 4th meeting will not give the city time to, um, get this water meter in place for the mid-June meeting. I can exercise emergency powers to approve this, but I am bringing this up tonight to give council an opportunity. If anybody objects, then I will call a special meeting of the city council and ask for your approval of this water meter. So are there any questions? Or does anybody on city council have an objection to me approving this under emergency authority?
No objection.
I'm offering to do that if you'd like.
Done here.
No objection.
Okay. So then I will proceed with that and report to you at the next council meeting that I, once I have done so. And, uh, that way we're keeping the council in the loop about what's going on.
Thank you.
John, I believe you had another disclosure that we needed to make, um, for council regarding a grant proposal in Wolverine Engineering. You wanna tell them what happened and then I'll wait.
Yes. Um, on the agenda, a couple items down. Uh, there will be a grant that we'll discuss for paving project. In my research and, um, looking into this and, uh, looking for assistance, communication with a neighboring community and their street administrator, gave me the, the name and, uh, number of this Wolverine Engineering in Mason, Michigan. The disclosure is, and there was nothing that anybody that I knew of, Mayor Huglitt and this, and his accounting firm and Wolverine, uh, have professional, um, interaction. Uh, I believe that, uh, the mayor's company does the accounting for Wolverine and that, that's my disclosure.
Yeah, and so, um, I have had a, about a decade-long professional connection through my ordinary job with Wolverine. Council rules require when something like this come up, it be disclosed. So this is the formal disclosure. You may give it whatever weight you see fit, uh, when you consider the proposal. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you. Hearing no questions. I have one other thing that came up, um, during the course of the last two weeks. I had a council member who's not present here who used his key to access City Hall in order to question the staff and have access to the red barrels for prescription drugs upstairs. Since city council, or city council has closed City Hall and that's not available to the public, my position is, is that city council, while they're welcome at City Hall, the function of city council members may not use their position and their keys to access services not available to the public. So I'm gonna ask, I wish that council member was here because none of you did that. But I've given instructions that in such case, council members are to be escorted out of City Hall. And, uh, that'll be the case until city council decides it's appropriate to reopen it. So that concludes my report. And we'll move to committee reports. Council members have any committee reports they'd like to deliver tonight? And I'm fortunate now I've got all four of you on one page. I've never had that happen before. I wish I knew how to lock it in that way.
I guess with the amount of people that are actually on the meeting at the moment.
Well, I hope everybody stays. I don't hear any council members saying they have a report. So, um, I think I already jumped ahead and did presentation and approval of the bills. So getting back in order, we're at old business discussion regarding becoming a sanctuary city. Uh, this is Mr. Wood's proposal. Does council want to get into this tonight? Or do you wish to leave it no action taken so it'll come up on the next agenda? What's council's pleasure regarding this Second Amendment sanctuary proposal?
Oh, it's Terry's proposal and if he's not here, available tonight to discuss it, we should probably wait until he is here so we know what he's thinking.
Are there any objections to leaving it no action taken?
None.
James, have you received anything on that at all? As far as like what it is or any information?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think so, but I wasn't sure.
When I got here tonight and she said she hasn't received anything regarding it. I have some of the material that he has, but, uh, that's, uh, that's just in my possession. I haven't distributed it out because I don't know what he wants to bring forward. And I didn't wanna stick my, uh, stick my two cents into this until he had a chance to make his proposal. Hearing no objection, then we'll leave this on your agenda as no action taken for the next meeting. That'll move us to new business, possible adoption of resolution for commitment to M.DOT grants. John, do you have some information to share with the council? And Mindy, is the sound working better for you now with my phone on?
Um, it's helping, but there's still a lot of warbling. I'm, I'm, I think I'm, I think I'm able to get the gist of everything now.
As long as you can hear, that's the most important thing.
I was gonna say, are you getting feedback, Mindy?
Thank you.
Mindy, are you getting feedback? Is she getting feedback? Like a lot of echo?
Yeah.
Um, you might wanna mute yourself if you haven't. Because I think what's happening is the phone is feeding back through your speaker on your computer. If you mute that, you can use the phone at least until you need to unmute real quick. Answer something. That might help.
Sorry, I don't know if that...
I can do it for you, Mindy.
Sorry, I can't hear you either.
That's okay.
If you can hear it through the phone, I've still got that on. Um, Mindy, if you can hear.
Yes.
Okay, John, we're ready to listen.
Okay. So, um, there's this grant and it's a 50% match to whatever the city puts forward. Uh, the resolution that you have in front of you tonight, um, I, I've been working on this and we, it's not fully ready to go and be submitted to M.DOT yet, but it's for, uh, local municipalities to get some extra money to put into street paving, uh, and just maintenance projects on the streets alone. So, uh, I can give you like, uh, what I've come up with and calculations. Looking at things going into next year based on revenues that I've seen, I, you know, I can't project what next year will be. So I'm looking at it from, uh, current revenues and highway major and highway local. We should have, after all, expenses and expenditures for salt and that type of stuff and wages around $105,000 between the two funds. Highway major obviously gets a little more than local. 50% can be moved into local annually. Right now, uh, there's a, a fund balance of approximately $120,000 in major and, uh, $140 in local. So what I'm looking at, and this is, this, what we're proposing to do in the resolution, that does not mean that we're gonna spend this amount. At this time here, I didn't have an amount when I submitted the resolution. So I'm gonna put in there $170,000 that the city would contribute and then we can get a grant up to 250. So basically, M.DOT, if, if these streets are approved, and I'm gonna add one more street, West Orchard, everything will be defined out. This is just the preliminary stuff so that the city council is aware of everything that we're doing, that nobody is, um, doing anything you guys know. So 170 would be the maximum amount that the city would, um, put forth. I believe that it, it's a little bit fat, but, um, I wanna make sure on these, I think I got seven, seven streets here. And there'll be various forms of, uh, maintenance done to them. I can't say exactly Wolverine Engineering. Like I said, they've come out and assessed them. They're working with me so that we, we get the best bang for our buck. So basically, 170 is gonna turn into, uh, 340. And, and that'll be, that, let's look at it like this. It's probably on the high end. So, uh, long story short, it looks like, uh, we would have to pull out a fund balance if we did the full 170, about $32,000. And this is just numbers split in half, uh, from each fund. So it would end up, each fund would have about 100, uh, fund balance left in it if, if we did the full 170. It can be changed. You know, I can't, the, the grant will be, uh, it has to be done by the 5th of June. So it'll be submitted the end of next week. Mid-June to late June, uh, excuse me, July, they will, um, award the, award everything. And then, so that'll be in the new year, the new fiscal year. And then, uh, in the fall, I think the checks would be ready. I, if I'm understanding it, like October, so anywhere in the timeframe of next fiscal year, I would be able to get it done.
So John, for the sake of clarity, council has in front of them a motion that is missing the amounts. And I wanna make sure we have a clear understanding. First amount that is missing is the part where it says, "Whereas the city of Perry is applying for amount in funding through M.DOT." What is the amount that you, you need for them under that part? Is it 250,000?
It'd be 170. I heard John say 340,000 for the whole amount and that the city would match 170, uh, which would be your second filling of the blank. Is that correct, John?
So you need 340,000 for the amount at the top and 170 for the match amount.
Yes.
Very good. So I'll open the floor up for council if there are any questions or discussion.
John, did, um, did Wolverine give any indication why those streets were on their hit list?
Those, those streets were the ones that I picked out. Because due, you know, uh, due to the timeframes and the, the, all of the stuff coming that was going on with this COVID thing, um, and the latest that I got on the grant. So, um, when some of these streets, there, there's portions where I know that I'm, I'm probably not gonna be doing any, uh, street or any utility work. And now I say that, if something happens, I can't not, I cannot guarantee, you know, that it, it wouldn't have to be repaired. But, um, so there's streets on here that may look like full streets, but Horace, for one, I have, it's gonna start at Madison and go to East Street. So it's not, it's, it's not portions where I have on the list to be for main replacement and hopefully the near future. You know, I, I can't guarantee any timeframes of that either. But, um, you know, I, I just went through and tried to pick the worst streets. And, um, you know, are there, are there others that, you know, small portions here and there that may need a little maintenance? Some of these, there's various things that this grant is, is capable of being used for. Some of it, you put a, a thin cap on it. Others get milled down. So Wolverine's gonna help me in that process, um, plugging it all in.
Great. Thanks for that. Appreciate it.
Mindy had her hand up patiently.
Um, yeah, I was, I was just wondering if these repairs, if they will help with, um, some of the water that sits in some of the areas? Um, like on the edges of the roads and stuff?
Well, that's, that's being looked at. It was raining, it was pouring the day that he was here doing the measurements. So, um, you know, town does not have a lot of curb and gutter or drainage. So, you know, some of those things will be taken into account. You know, it's various spots where, where we probably could raise them or put some material in to try to shed that water.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I know like my driveway becomes a swamp for a while every time it rains or snows or things like that.
Yeah. Um, you know, some of that, uh, I, you know, so I'm not doing portions of that. It will take, you know, if... so I'm not doing portions of that, uh, it, it will take, you know, if, if the need arises and you know, I in order to do a lot of uh drainage work, it's gonna probably triple the cost. So, um, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done. Um, you know, some of these areas, probably curb and gutter should have been installed so that it had a place to stop the water. But um, it is e- extremely expensive to install it at this point.
One thing that I'll just bring up for the future, um, for council members to be able to keep an eye on is that times in the past, there's been problems with administrations enforcing development rule. If you go over Perry Lakes, which is a beautiful area, the houses that got in there early have gone in without sidewalks. Back at that time, as that started, the uh city was not enforcing on the developer, the requirement that they put sidewalks. Um, we have corrected that problem over the last several years. Um, and, and it's important for each administration that comes afterwards and each city council to be aware that those development requirements are there and make sure that they're enforced because when those things aren't enforced, at the time the development goes in, then the uh the cost of those improvements gets dumped back on the city's citizens down the road. So that's the history of where this has come up, and we even have some more recent examples um out in Perry Lakes where a substantial number of houses were allowed to come in without the required uh sidewalks.
James, when the uh Perry Lakes was put in, did they, were they responsible for paving all the roads and stuff also at that time?
Yes. But they gave the streets back to the city to maintain after they built them, if that's your question.
I see Craig's lips moving, but I don't hear him.
Do you hear me now?
Yes. You're muted again, Craig.
I was just keeping myself on mute when I'm not talking.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know if you had something that you wanted to add or?
I was just asking that question, so Devin answered it well. Thank you.
Well, I have one more thing to add. Um, the grant money does not cover the engineering costs uh or any of that. And if we do not get the grant, then there is no cost uh occurred at this time to pay for engineering fees. That's, that's the uh the way that I understand it to, in talking to the engineer at Wolverine. So, and, and um, I'm looking at, I, I would say somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars to assist with this. If we get the grant.
Additional questions or comments from council? Devin, does anyone have their hand up?
Not at this time.
Is council prepared to make a decision on this? I'll open the floor up for motion.
Go ahead and do it. Whereas the city of Perry is applying for three uh hundred and seventy or three hundred and forty?
Three hundred and forty thousand dollars of, in funding.
Three hundred and forty thousand dollars in funding through M dot from the Transportation Economic Development Category B program to construct resourcing on East Polly Street, East Madison Street, Williams Street, East Kinney Street, Horace Street, Starlet Oak Lane, and possibly others. Whereas M dot requires a formal commitment from the public agency that will be receiving these funds and will be implementing and maintaining these infrastructure projects. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city has authorized John Sauter, Superintendent of Public Works, to act as agent on behalf of the city to request Transportation Economic Development Fund Category B Program Funding, to act as the applicant's agent during the project development and to sign a project agreement upon receipt of a funding award. Be it further resolved that the city attests to the existence of and commits to providing at least a hundred and seventy thousand dollars toward the construction costs of the project and all costs for design, permit fees, administration costs, and cost overrun. Be it further resolved that the city of commits to owning, operating, funding, and implementing a maintenance program over the design life of the facilities constructed with Transportation Economic Development Fund Category B Program Funding.
Second.
Moved by Elliot, I think the second came for Cottrell, is that correct?
That's correct.
To approve the resolution as just read, is there a discussion? Hearing no discussion. Councilwoman Cottrell.
Yes.
Councilman Elliott.
Yeah.
Councilman Elliott. Councilwoman Galbavi?
Yes.
Councilman Grass?
Yes.
The vote is um for approved, unanimous. Okay, that will take us to the next item of new business, which is assessing the procedures to consider opening City Hall. Devin has done a lot of work on this and has provided a great deal of documentation to council regarding this. Devin, do you want to report first, or do we wanna open it up for questions?
Well, we're on discussion, possible amendment of council rules and procedures, the next subject, mayor, so this, that is all them, not, not me.
Okay, I'm sorry. I
That's alright.
Discussion of possible amended council rules and procedures. I had an impression that this is Mr. Grass's.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask that it be left, there's no action taken, cuz it's something me and Mr. Wood was talking about with him not being present, I'd prefer to wait till he's here.
Okay. Any objection to leaving it, no action taken, and it'll come up on your next agenda? And we will leave it, so. And that'll move us to assessing the procedures to consider opening City Hall. Now that I'm back in order, Devin, did you wanna give a report to council, or do we wanna go right to their questions?
Um, well, I gave you guys a lot of information before the agenda packet, during the agenda packet, and then another update that was delivered to your house. So uh, maybe I shouldn't do any talking and let you begin on what you would like to know. Only thing I will report before we begin is two things I heard is to um, check us out at uh OSHA, MyOSHA, and I also added CDC level in and, and bounce this against our city attorney to make sure that we are compliant. The city attorney has not um responded yet at this time.
I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
Yeah, um, great job. This is a lot of information. Together an amazing packet. You did a really good job. Um, when I looked at what is in the governor's EO ninety-one and ninety-two, you hit the marks. So, and that's the standard that the folks here in Michigan are looking against. So you did a great job. I put it right up against the checklist and I found everything that you needed to hit.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, um, a couple, just a couple of quick notes, um, in the
Yes.
Part of the plan, it's referencing EO forty-two and fifty-nine. Um, those have been replaced by EO ninety-one and ninety-two.
And I know in an email, and just so all know this and make sure that you're on the same page, um, Genevieve can respect this. Um, even the mayor called one day and I told him I was doing this. We are changing so fast, sometimes it's hard for me to keep up with the numbers. And so, um yes, I will, I will make reference. Can you tell me what page you were on and I'll reference that right now, please?
I am on page one, second paragraph. It says EO twenty, twenty, forty-two and subsequent EO twenty, twenty, fifty-nine. Um, so those are, those have been replaced now with ninety-one and ninety-two. Those are the relevant ones. And don't worry.
I'm sorry, what page?
I'm on page one of the Model COVID nineteen Preparedness Plan. So there's a table of contents on page one, at the top of the page. It's, it's a back.
And that's what I was kind of hoping our city attorney would catch me on. Um
That just came in on May eighteenth, so like three days ago. So, we all were, there is a lot in there that, there's a lot we expected, but there was also some things in that we didn't expect, so.
I, um, I've been doing a lot of research and uh we're on a clerk server is what I, I'm joined to. Uh, what I had was two clerks were sharing their plan. And I referenced, um, the city of Reading is the one. Um, just a little background for your information. Sterling Heights was the other one that had their plan. And they are like a hundred and forty-six pages with their plan. And they also have a population of a hundred and two, thirty-two thousand. Um, the city of Reading has a population of one thousand forty-six, and the more I looked at it, I'm like, this is very comparable. Um, we are not over the top, we don't have several departments is why I picked them. And I already found from the time that they approved it, even the back research that links you had already changed. And so I appreciate you, you already catching some of them, Genevieve. Um, but until we approve it, would, I think they're gonna, um, it's gonna be changing all the time. I tried to pick links that hopefully at a state and federal level that they're offering will change on their own, so if somebody goes to that link, you won't be tricked of, it's not there anymore. But I'm running into that already. I've already ran into it at a state level. Um, OSHA directed me to MyOSHA. And in less than a week, when I went, went back to that wonderful document by MyOSHA, it was gone. It disappeared.
Yeah, cuz it was replaced by EO ninety-two. I know, we all got caught by it. All us emergency managers were blindsided by it, so you're doing a tremendous job. So that looks good. Um, let's see, if we go down to on that same page one, employee screening before entering the work.
Yes.
You guys have a great form here. Um, it looks like, you know, you're asking the right questions. Um, this isn't HIPAA protected information, so you, you know, you're doing a great job of having that. What you wanna, what you wanna put in here is
Okay, you, you went out just a tiny bit.
Okay, so for the workplace screening tool, it looks good. Um, it this isn't HIPAA protected information because it's a public health emergency, so you should be okay. In that, in that statement, though, where it goes, and I think you have it in your plan, just where it's going to be filed. Your employees email it to you and then it goes in. Um, if one of the things some workplaces are doing is they're taking that form and making it a fillable PDF. And so employees can even fill it out before they come into work or as they come into work and it just, you know, instead of having to write out the paper form.
Okay, that's a good idea because electronic could be saved and removed a lot easier.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a good idea. Cuz I know, um, it's, uh, everybody's just so happy about it. I know it is.
Yeah, so, so just write in there because when, if MyOSHA comes to call, they're gonna wanna know those, where those records are kept. And it's like one thing, we put them on the server under this file. So again, you've got it in there, so, and you're using it. So it's good. Are you using it right now?
Um, I have to admit, cuz we're still pretty much on a one-to-one, we are not, police department is. Once we are all at the same time, we will do the screening.
Okay, yeah, the, the state doesn't differentiate, um, whether you're there by yourself or whether you're with a group. So, yeah, no matter who's
The forms, the forms are ready and done.
Great, yeah, you're ahead of the curve.
And they've seen them.
Yeah.
They're just waiting for me to say you have to fill them out.
Um, if we go to page two, personal protective equipment, a lot of great information in there. You've got the cloth face coverings, which is really good. Um, let's see, um, it has some, some very generic language in here about personal protective equipment such as gloves, goggles, and face shields. So either take that statement out or put who's going to wear what.
Okay.
Because otherwise it looks like a directive, like you're not giving your employees the directive on what they're supposed to wear.
Yeah.
And you're supposed to do that, so.
That, that's good, though, be, I, I can reference it to the what I actually have as procedure because how I address it is, um, your supervisor will direct, um, what protective gear you will need to address.
Yeah.
So I can make them match in that form of, of the same.
Yeah, well, and I assume, well, the chief has a plan. John Sauter has a plan for his guys what PPE looks like, and you do, so you can even put three bullet points. You know, what that, what that looks like.
Okay.
Because then, then you have documentation that in writing you gave your employees that information.
Okay.
Yeah, so that shouldn't be too bad. Um, let's see. Um, you do have, the city does have to provide the face coverings, and employees can refuse it and use their own, but you do have to provide it.
We have them.
Yeah, so that's not um, the, okay, social distancing, great, hygiene, great, cleaning and disinfecting. Um, in this section, you wanna be a little bit more specific about what the expectation was, what disinfectant you're using, how long the contact time is, that sort of thing. So, are you looking at bleach, are you looking at some sort of EPA list N disinfectant?
Well done.
Yeah.
We were, we were told that we have one that, that if left on a surface for, um, utterly wet for ten minutes.
Okay, can you, can you read me the name of?
Um, Hepicide Quat Two.
That's great, yeah, that's exactly what you want. Yeah, that's a great list N, EPA list N, and it is a, a coronavirus effective, so um, in, in that statement, just put this is the product we're using. Uh, usually there's a contact time, usually five or three to five minutes. Just put it here, we're using this product, contact for three to five minutes. Then you will be completely covered for your disinfectant course.
Okay.
A great paragraph, that looks good. I don't think there was much more that I had. Um, oh, um let's see, this would be on page four. When you have a confirmed case, you want to report that to Chi-Wise County Health Department.
And that, um, this information was after she did it, so that makes sense. I didn't catch that.
Yeah, yeah, nope. Uh, uh, let's see. Other than that, oh, the vehicle sanitation guideline, it says this is a clean and disinfect for an ambulance. So, were you guys gonna do this for John's trucks or?
Um, John was hoping that this policy and procedures that I've created would, I mean, other than small details, would address his vehicles, but I don't think we're addressing an ambulance vehicle, so maybe we need to just readdress it.
Like, I don't know, put a little white out or cross it off? I don't know, something like that. But again, that's, that's good. Um, let's see. About it. All the rest is beautiful. This will stand up. Nice work.
Okay, so when what, um, if I understand the governor right and my gut says that she's gonna open us up June first, but don't quote me. Um, but we're all talking and pushing on a clerk's, that we're, us clerks are ready to get business moving and give us time to get everything in play. The way I read the governor is that we have to have this um, Preparedness Response Plan um done by June first or two weeks near after. I don't know what that two weeks means. Does that mean from June first, we have two more weeks?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Yeah, but you're ready and having it beforehand is really good, so, yeah.
Okay. And I sent you lots of pretty pictures and arrows and all of that. Council have any questions or, I think we were pretty close before we even began. Um, other than this prepared and response plan, I, I have to admit, I've been waiting for somebody to do the work to help me get through the template, cuz I knew it was pretty complicated. So I am happy. So I am happy that I found a city that was, um, had, had some city manager out there working on that.
My only other suggestion would be, is that in this paper copy, so you're gonna do some kind of training. It'll feel really awkward, but you want to sit down with your employees and, you know, say, here is the form. About it, and then have a place for a signature for each employee and then for the mayor, who's acting as the supervisor or that. So that if my OSHA comes, you can say, everybody read it, we did a training on this day. Everyone had a chance to ask questions. So just a signatory page on the, on the final page.
Makes sense.
That's all I had to say about that. Sorry, everybody.
So in council's opinion, should I revise this and your, um, like I said, I did mimic the back copy for the mayor to put his, that he's submitted this. Are we comfortable on doing that? Do we want this to another council meeting until I get all these cleaned up? But what is your preference on this issue? That's why I didn't make a motion, because I've been doing the best I can and I wasn't sure, um, what, what you want and if I needed to do more work is where I was at.
My thought is, is that the, the things that are, are left to tidy up are very small. And could we make a motion that says with the recommended changes? I don't think you're gonna have to rewrite the document, that it would be a significantly different document, that it would take another reading by city council. How do the other council members feel about that?
I concur.
I agree.
And the last question, um, uh, anybody can answer. Genevieve, this is kind of your background, so I'm kind of directing this more towards you. In your opinion, can, um, because the police department has been following a lot of their own procedures, but as a city, is the Department of Public Works be able to piggyback on this prepared and response plan as long as we tweak a few items to identify them?
I think so. I think keeping the cops separate is probably good because they have different PPE and things requirements. But for, yeah, for DPW and city workers, it makes sense. John, you're not using significantly different PPE than city hall is, are you? Okay, yeah, then it should cover, it should cover DPW and city hall.
Okay, I appreciate that. So it's all up to you, council, on what you would like to do.
I make a motion that we move forward with this, uh, procedures that are being written down with the changes that were suggested being implemented also and corrected. And that we, um, move forward with, uh, implementing these procedures.
After June first?
I'm assuming is that June first is when everything is opening up and, or?
It's not definite, but we're assuming.
Let's, let's say June first then.
Are you meaning after the governor approves opening?
Yeah. Well, you know what, though, we might look at that because in ninety-two, what she did was divide the state into different regions and the different regions are gonna open at different times. And ninety-two specifically says governmental offices, except for essential workers like John, who has to, you know, do sewer maintenance and things. It could be closed, so June first might not be the day. So maybe it's better to say when the governor lifts it for Region Five. Because that's the region we're in.
But she says to have the plan done by June first, whether I ask you to open or not. Correct? Or don't?
No, it doesn't necessarily have to be June first. It has to be weeks before, uh, before, at the time you open or two weeks after, so.
Okay.
We might on June first, it might not be till June fifteenth or whenever Region Five is allowed to go.
Fair enough.
Greg, that really threw a monkey wrench in it. I should have explained that better.
You wanna go ahead and do the motion then?
I move that the city council approve the, uh, oh gosh. The City of Perry COVID nineteen Preparedness and Response Plan to be enacted when the governor lifts the order and city hall can resume.
Is anybody there? Is everybody just quiet?
I'm here.
I've got you. I heard the motion by Katrel, which I'm gonna need Devin to read back, make sure we've got it right. And did anybody second?
I seconded.
Okay, so motion by Katrel, seconded by Grass. Devin, would you please read the motion to make sure that we correctly captured what council's trying to do?
Honestly, I'd have to listen to the recording on that. She approved the COVID nineteen Preparedness and Response Plan effective, um, as of District Five would, um, open up to business.
Does that adequately capture your motion?
It does.
Okay, um, let us know if there's any problem once you see the minutes. If there is a problem, there'll be an opportunity to amend the language at the next meeting when you approve the minutes.
Very good. And if, um, one more discussion before you guys go into a vote. Assessing the procedure to consider opening city hall, I gave you this plan. And so we're approving the plan according to opening. So is council saying that city hall will open once the governor opens District Five? Is that what we're looking, is that part of this discussion too?
Um, I hadn't put it in there, but if we can loop that in there, I'm comfortable with that. What does the rest of the city council feel?
Well, that's, that's how the subject came up.
Yeah, it, it's your motion, so let's consider that in there. Adam, does that, is your second sustained with that in there?
Adam disappeared.
Yes, he did.
Oh, we don't have a forum then. We need Adam back. Mindy, I'm gonna hang up the phone and reach out.
Okay.
Hopefully your sound is still working well.
At the moment, it's doing fine.
Hey, James, you want me to try and call him? And that way you don't have to disconnect from Mindy?
Oh, I already did.
Okay.
But thank you. I appreciate the offer to help. See if we can get Mr. Grass back into this conversation.
Here he comes. He's coming. Ooh, feel like I'm in Star Wars.
Adam, welcome back. Did you hear where we're at?
You're muted.
Oh, sorry, Adam, because you came in.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, I, yeah, I'm not sure exactly when it cut off. I think that, uh, I didn't hear the roll call that did that.
I made a discussion before roll call was made. My concern is, is that I took it upon myself to do as much work to get the Preparedness Response Plan, and that's what I reported. But this, um, topic, assessing the procedures to consider opening city hall was the actual subject I'm talking under. And so Genevieve made a motion and my question was, um, this motion was about when city hall would open. So do we need to make a motion to, um, so that all of council is on the same decision on how, um, and include this Preparedness Plan? I just want to make sure, um, that we didn't kind of blindside with the plan and not get to the subject that you asked to be on the agenda.
Sure. Uh, I'm fine with it being read that way. I mean, unless somebody wants to separate it. I mean, I, do you even really need a motion on the, on the plan? Is that something that they're requiring from municipalities, Genevieve?
Uh, uh, in terms of, yeah, so, so they are required to have a plan and they're required to stay closed until Region Five opens, so.
Are they requiring us to approve the plan, though, is what I mean?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if you want to separate it, it's fine. However, however, it's fine with me. It's fine with me the way it was read personally.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I, I, I just felt I might have overpowered with one subject and, and it was put on the table for, um, more than just the plan.
Yeah, that, that works for me. If, if everybody else is coming from YAM.
All right.
Okay, so your second is sustained. Is council prepared to vote?
Yes.
Okay, uh, let's see, who's turn to go first? Councilman Elliott?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Galbavy?
Yes.
Councilman Grass?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katrel?
Yes.
Very good. That will move us on to discussion of possible approval to amend hourly employee leave hours. Devin, you wanted to make a report to council on this?
Yes. I wondered, I asked a few questions in your agenda packet and I want to make sure that I understand. And, um, also to explain what the ladies were offered on March twenty-third, when it originally opened up. They were, um, they were told that they wouldn't be working full-time hours due to COVID because we needed to work a skeleton shift. Um, but they were offered to be able to use their leave time to receive a full paycheck. Now, from the twenty-third to April first, things had changed. April first, and we checked with the labor attorney, it was effective that you were to give eighty hours leave due to certain COVID circumstances, which our staff would have followed underneath that because they were forced to have to stay at home an amount of, of time. Then we had a meeting, um, the mayor had asked, um, council their thoughts of possibly laying off or to continue paying city employees. So I took that in account for the date. So what I have done, if I understand it right, I have, um, returned the eighty hours that at a federal level, they told us that we should be giving a sick leave. And then as of, I believe it's the twenty-seventh, it was determined, um, works out in that payroll after your council decision to move forward and keep employees on. And because of that twenty-third difference, on March twenty-third to April first, um, these girls really have been working part-time. So they've used leave, they have not been sick, they have not been on vacation, they have not balked about anything. And, um, out of politeness, I, I was asking just to return their leave and, um, I'm, I need uh, approval, of course. I, I can't just give Joe money because I like him or give him vacation, you know that. So I put it in front of you to consider. Um, I did not tell the ladies I was doing this, because I don't think that's fair. Because, um, you might have ve- valuable reason to say no. So I leave it in front of you.
I have no discussion. I think we should return the leave time.
I move that we authorize a city clerk to return the used, uh, leave hours in order for hourly city hall staff to receive full paychecks due to the original Governor Whitmer's Executive Order twenty twenty twenty-one Stay-at-Home Order on March twenty-third, twenty twenty, which stated non-essential workers could only come back to work to continue demands of the city business that could not be done remotely.
Okay. I seconded just in case I wasn't heard.
You were there.
Okay.
James, are you muted?
I'm sorry. Motion by Grass, seconded by Elliott for the, uh, motion just read. I won't go through and read it all. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilwoman Galbavy?
Yes.
Councilman Grass?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katrel? Councilman Elliott?
Yeah.
Genevieve, thank you for jumping in there and saying that you understood what the request was. I appreciate that. So that will move us to, let's see, I have too many pages here. That takes us to the end of new business and to any other business that may come before council. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the Perry City Council on any matter. Like to be, if anybody raises their hand, you zoom.
I see no hands at this time.
I, I have one, uh, I have some input I need to bring forward about the resolution. Is now a proper time?
Um, let's move past public comment and then we'll, John. Okay, Devin, any hands?
No.
Okay, so we'll close public comment. John, you had something to add to council here under any other business?
Well, on the resolution, I, I think that when, uh, I, I, I may have made a mistake in saying that we were, the first amount, when we said we were asking, that's the total. We're asking, uh, funding of a hundred and seventy thousand from MDOT. So I think we need to change that. I don't know if we have to back up and do the whole, uh, resolution all over again. I, I just don't want it to be submitted and go through and then be incorrect because we're not asking for three hundred and forty, we're asking them for one seventy. Uh, I do apologize.
That's what I was wondering. I was wondering, now would I ask the question?
Yeah, so let's, let me ask this. Devin, you tell me if this is procedurally okay to the best of your knowledge. Can we ask city council for, without making them reread the whole resolution to have a vote to authorize changing the first amount from three hundred and forty to one hundred and seventy thousand? If that's the correct way to present this?
I would say if you order a resolution, as long as you're ordering the clerk to change the resolution to identify this. Doesn't have to be that complicated, but something to, so that the minutes would reflect that the original motion had the wrong amounts and that they're making a, a motion to redirect those amounts. So what are we, what are we matching, John?
Well, our match is down at the bottom, so where it says that the city is, so in the beginning, it's one, we're asking MDOT for a hundred and seventy thousand and we're gonna match one seventy.
Okay, that was, so it was a total of a hundred and thirty-four and I wasn't understanding you on that. So the way.
Three hundred and forty thousand would be the total.
Okay, so the way I understand it, John, I think the resolution is correct. Are, uh, we're going to give a hundred and seventy thousand?
Yes. That's the maximum amount.
We're gonna go to MDOT and they're, you're, you're saying that they're only gonna give a hundred and seventy? Because the way I read it is they want the whole amount in that part. Which would be the three hundred and forty thousand.
Applying for, um, amount in funding through MDOT.
Okay.
Can, can council authorize us to simply change that first number if necessary? Effectively saying, well, we approve this, but it says three forty or one seventy. Can they do that, Devin?
Yeah, I could say pending, uh, attorney approval, pending attorney approval and then we'll know. Or engineer approval will remain and, because they're the one that's doing the work to help you with it.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Do, do we need to meet in the motion or what?
All right. Uh, let's see. I make a motion to order the clerk to change the amount from three hundred and forty thousand dollars to, to one hundred and seventy thousand dollars on the MDOT resolution passed this evening by the council.
Second.
Perfect.
Okay, move by Katrel, seconded by Elliott to change the amount from the MDOT resolution from three hundred and forty thousand to one hundred and seventy thousand. Third discussion. Let's see, whose turn is it to go first? Councilman Grass?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katrel? Councilwoman Katrel?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Elliott?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Galbavy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Do council members have any other items of business that need to come up for council action tonight?
I was wondering if I could make a comment or thought on a change?
We're on the per, for new business, things that need council action, and then we'll go to council discussions and observations, and everybody gets a chance to make a comment.
All right.
Will that work for you?
Yep.
Okay, any other business? If no other business, I'll recognize Councilman Elliott for comment.
So, uh, trying to get a, an understanding of the, uh, Perry Pride Awards and situation like that. And so I was going, I was supposed to, I'm supposed to be on the next one for June, so I went around this week and looked around. I noticed that even at this point in time, there's very little going on as far as, because of weather and things like that, not just because of, not because of COVID-nineteen or anything, that very little in the way of flowering and things like that are going on at this point in time in the, in the year, because of Michigan. And so I was thinking, I, I know that we have this where we went six months, and we go May to October, but that means that the person who's involved with May is effectively doing, deciding on who gets this all the way in April. And by that time, I mean, half the time, people are not even going outside and doing things yet, hardly in their yard, and there's hardly any flowers or anything that looks like presentable. And I'm just wondering if it would be wise to either move this forward so that like the, instead of having the first month, May, have it be June, where there'd be some more growth and possibility of seeing what people are doing? Or even like doubling up and having like, instead of having six different months, have like four months and do it from like, say, June to through September, and have like two sections double up for, say, July and August, or July, August and September, or something like that, to actually see what people, the results of what people's efforts are doing to try and beautify their homes and businesses. And so I, I was just, I was going around, there was like maybe ten homes that had anything out there in the entire southeast section of town. And I don't think it was just because nobody was doing anything, it was too early in the year to really have much going on. So that was my observation.
My observation is I'm not sure where I'm supposed to be. Now, I had stuff picked out, and this map is different than what I understood. The one I got this time has Mr. Powell in the section I've already picked stuff out in.
Okay, do we want to give Chris my section then?
I don't care to do the other one, if I do, I just, it's just gonna be late.
Um, I, I really think, uh, human error is allowed, and usually Chris Powell would probably trade with you, it's not that big of a deal. And, um, Craig, your question about changing this up, um, there was some council, um, rules that, um, council approved to kind of do this, so, you know, this is supposed to be fun, this is supposed to be promoting of the city. Um, so you, as a council, I don't know if you want to do a small committee and just kind of jot something down so that it doesn't become, you know, a side half-an-hour conversation to get it the way you would like it to work? It could be as simple as that, or have one, you know, mayor, in your opinion? I don't, I don't see, it's wrong. Can one council work and, and then share it with all, and then they say agree? I mean, does it always have to be a committee?
They, they can. A council member can bring a proposal forward, but if they'd like to have a discussion, I'll happily appoint a work group to discuss it. Um, the, the thing that I would say is that you're gonna have a push and pull on either end. The system was set up to maximize the opportunities to recognize good things that citizens and business were doing. Six a year, we obtained sponsorship for that. It's worked successfully for several years for council. And if you push back the beginning, then you push the end back into the winter, actually into November and, uh, and December, and run into the same problem on the other end. It was also designed to make sure that each council member had an opportunity to go out and recognize, um, folks. So it was designed to include all six councilmen. So I, I think, um, we want to be very careful before we just go and change something that's worked successfully. But yes, we could have individual council member, Mr. Elliott could sit down and write up a proposal and submit it to all of us, or we can have a work group that sits down and talks about this and considers if there's a way that they can improve this.
I was more throwing it out there just first off, is to see if anybody had any thoughts, or I'm the only one that's even thinking like this.
Honestly, it's gonna kind of be that way for us, for my month, because I mean, even though I've got the stuff picked out, I'm going to suggest that the presentation have not be done until June when we're back in chambers, so, um, so we'll.
We can certainly delay presentation until we can do it, uh, appropriately here. Do, do you want to, does council want to have a work group to discuss this?
Just bring your presentation, Chris, or Craig.
Craig.
Yeah.
I'll just, you want to just, next month or the next meeting, I could just say something?
Sure, yeah, sounds great.
Do you have the original so that you can compare and see and, and?
No.
Hmm, you better not say that in front of Dory, because I bet you she did. I bet you she did. No, I mean the rules. I'll get it to you, Craig, no problem.
Councilman Elliott's on mute, uh, but do you have anything else for us, Craig?
Sorry about that, I was talking a lot, but I thought I was still off. I didn't realize I was back on.
That could have been a good feature, you could have been seeing lots of things.
I, I, right, probably saved everybody. No, that's, that's fine, that, that works fine with me. Feel free to send me those if you want, Devin, and I'll look into it for next meeting.
Craig, Craig, if you'd like a little input, I'd be happy to talk with you. If you want to run your ideas by one or two other council members, then you wouldn't be stretching it out to a forum, so if you want to talk to Mr. Grass and get his advice, you could do that. It might be worth your time to have a chat with our former mayor pro tem, Tom Sheppi, who was instrumental piece in putting this together and getting his thoughts. He might be able to share some of his experience and the reasons that they did it the way that they did it. Anything else, Mr. Elliott?
That is it.
Councilwoman Galbavy, discussion and observations?
Um, yeah, I would like to discuss that you, um, have told our police that they will not assist other law enforcement agencies in enforcing the governor's orders. And, um, I understand that there are times when you have to make decisions without consulting council, but I think we should have been consulted before you did that.
I, I, I want to correct the statement. It didn't say that our police will not assist enforcing the government. I said we would not perform strict enforcement, that we would exercise discretion. So certainly if there was something going on in the city that would, um, would, um, put people in danger, our police department would appropriately respond. And I wanted to bring that up because I've been watching the news media. I haven't been talking to the news media, but I've been watching the news headline misrepresent what I said. And I did not say in that statement that I put out that we would not enforce the governor's order, but that we would exercise common sense in enforcing it, and that we would, um, we would treat people like adults. And so certainly, our police department will respond where it's appropriate. But I, I'm unwilling to monitor people leaving their house and call them over to check if they've got a justified reason to go out. I'm not willing to go in to send the police into Carol's Market to inspect whether or not they're adequately doing the masks. Um, so I, I just wanted to say that, because I've been watching the media say, I'm saying we're not going to enforce anything to go there, so I didn't. So I wanted to make correction. Um, this is a, a question of, um, discretion and enforcement. It's like when the police decide to, um, issue tickets or warnings when they're calling folks over. And so I believe it to be an administrative decision in exercising that discretion. And so that's the way I treated it. So now I've chopped my mouth off, and Mindy, uh, if you'd like to say more, the floor is open to you.
Um, I appreciate you clarifying that. Um, I'm no longer upset about it. I, I, what, what the media had said.
Yeah, I, it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and if any council member, and, and me acting in my administrative function wants to talk to me about concerns that you have, um, I'm not part of the city council or part of your forum, so there's no open meeting issues with calling me up and telling me what you think, even chewing me out if you think I need to be chewed out or, uh, asking questions. So I will always take your calls, and I'll be glad to have those conversations with you. And I want you all to know, I always listen to council members. I don't always agree with council members, but I always listen to everything you guys say, and I always take it serious.
Well, I'm glad that this, for this opportunity to clarify, because what the paper was stating really wasn't very good.
I, I, I agree, and, and this was the approach I took with the media, because they have a tendency to blow things out. So the only response I ever gave was, I am simply taking a stand for the people of Perry, insisting they be treated like responsible adults. This isn't and cannot be about me. I stand by my written order, and I am declining all press interviews. I have nothing to add beyond what I wrote. And I took that position because they were already misstating what I wrote, and I didn't want to give them an opportunity to take something I said and blow it more and more out of proportion. I have discussed with, um, the enforcement staff, and they understand strict enforcement versus, um, doing nothing. And, and they certainly have a will. We have an outstanding staff here, they have a will to keep the people safe.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, Mindy. Did you have other things?
No, that was it.
Councilman Grass?
No comment.
Councilwoman Cottrell?
Yeah, I'll comment on, um, Mindy's point or. The rear. Um, it is within, you're right, as the mayor, to make the administrative order. Um, I would agree with Mindy that bringing that before council or letting council know your intention, um, if it was misconstrued by the media, having some other eyes looking at it and perhaps looking at the language of it to make sure that that's exactly what we want to represent to the city, how the media might take it, how other law enforcement agencies or the Attorney General might interpret that. Um, I think some input from the council in that case, um, may have been beneficial.
I, I would point out that I did submit the order to City Council before our last meeting. And before I signed it. Did you have anything else? This is your time, so you get final word.
You submitted something about the police?
No, the, that administrative order that went in the press regarding strict enforcement was sent to council before last City Council meeting. And before I signed it.
Are you sure?
I didn't get anything about that.
I didn't get anything about that either.
I'm sure it was included in along with the one.
We're having a hard time.
City Hall, I wouldn't have.
I wasn't able to hear you, I'm sorry.
We're, we're having a hard time hearing you.
I'm amazed it not go to them. Uh, yeah, we're having Zoom problems. Um, and, and we may have lost the clerk. Uh, I'll tell you what, I'll confirm with the clerk, but I understood it was transmitted through the clerk to you guys. I'll confirm that, and I will talk to her.
We, we got the administrative order about opening City Hall, but not the one about, um, constitutional, um, override. We didn't get the second one. We did get the first one, though.
I had submitted them to the city clerk, and I had understood that they had been transmitted to council before the meeting. I'll confirm with her.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Then the time is now eight-thirty PM, and I will close this session of the Perry City Council. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. I can't wait until it's safe for us all to be back together again. I, I'm not fond of these Zoom meetings. I have trouble hearing you all, and I like it when we're all here and we can hear each other clearly. Thank you very much, everybody.
Here, here.